That's an awful heavy piece.
Too funny.
But we beat it.
It's true.
Yeah, it is. I got a gun, but I didn't have a gun, so.
Did you do a nice job, huh? Did a nice job.
We're working on a ride. They drive to ride. Oh, my God. You get to take a rest. At least that's what I was doing. My grandmother, she passed. Get the cattle because now you're going to be back to the shop. She said she'd get out.
Maybe you check the room, Mom.
They get out of one three. The husband's gone from my business. No, I'm doing a public. It's three or four hours of work.
Oh, it's crazy.
And the sky like that. So it is, they don't change it. They were out in front about half a foot. It's actually long.
They have to be long.
Just watching TV. I don't think they get down. She wanted to pass them. A long time.
For a year to fly by and the next thing he sees.
Swill. They were out. He's in trespassing. Way too soon.
Does that dry too soon?
No, they were. They're right on the road. The flagman was in.
You think you're hungry, huh?
That's right.
I've got you.
So I have some minutes for those of you who would like to mark them for both September and October. That top one is not Stigler.
I think she has dropped.
I'm for October.
Excellent.
Was she going to say April, July?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so it goes that I have two copies of September. How does that work? Does anybody have two Octobers?
I have one of each.
You do have one of each.
I have two Octobers.
Tom, do you have?
Uh-huh, thank you.
Actually, I have three.
Oh, maybe I'll swap with you, Tom. If you see this to me.
Thank you.
Can I take your extra? Thank you, sir.
All right, good evening, everyone. Let's start the meeting. This is the Ralsford Planning Board for.
I'm going to tell Michelle.
Hi.
Hello, Michelle, it's Caroline. John just opened the meeting, so we'll hope that you can hear pretty well, but you're on speaker.
Okay, I probably am going to put it on you.
Okay, very good.
Sure, thank you. All right, this is the November fourteenth, the Ralsford Planning Board. And it looks to me that the first item on our agenda is a public hearing for Norman and Wanda Gagnon. So if they'd like to come up and.
Hi, my name is Joel Wells. I work for more than such. We need to represent Wondre Norman and his aunt, who's a Gagnon parent of the vocal trust. We're here in September to submit our block line revision. And that was to create this area right here. This lot was odd shaped here. Came down like that. And what he got was Norman, Norman got this piece here. And when we went to state the property lines up, we weren't adjusting over here at all, but when we went to state the existing block corner, we found that there was just some chain link fence that's around this pool. Actually, fell on the wrong side of the fence. Everybody, Norman and his cousin and stuff, they wanted to make sure that the fence was on the right side. Sent us trying to sell this property. So I moved the property line a foot and created this little triangular piece in here. You can see the detail up there. It's only point three nine feet and down here is one foot. It's all thing is only ninety-one square feet. So, but now instead of Norman getting just this area, he has to give that area to his aunt. So he's now giving ninety-one feet to Norman, but still giving this piece over.
Okay. Great. So, Tom, do you have any concerns or any comments about this?
I really don't. I read the letter from Attorney Weiss School and I mean, it's a pretty straightforward issue.
Okay.
No concerns.
All right. Michelle, do you want to chime in or are you okay with?
No, I have no concerns about this one.
All right, thank you. Any members of the board wish to ask any questions of the, all right. Any members of the, open for public comment? Any members of the public wish to comment on this particular issue? All right, seeing no interest, I'm going to close the public comment. So at this time, I think it would be appropriate to have a vote as to whether or not we're going to amend the previous applied, approved application.
Make a motion to amend the previously approved block line adjustments.
Okay, in a second, okay, all right. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Eyes have it, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have the.
Thank you, too.
Well, can you talk about like filing fees and like that and a sizable copy like that?
Do you also have a ownership and things?
The trust.
Yeah.
I believe so. I'll check, we'll be in touch if not, but I think so. Sure thing.
All right, next on the agenda is Lawrence Sustainable Development and the waiver request. If they want to come forward and good.
My name is Bob Stoll from Tri-Tech. Again, and Mike, Mike Brigham here as well. We left last time with a very short laundry list of what we needed to do. And we provided you with a revised set of plans that took care of a couple of drafting issues on things, as well as we submitted the waiver requests to allow what was being considered the pork chop lots. And so you had that waiver request in the package that basically says that we had specific building sites that we had picked as we would typically do in a open space or cluster type subdivision, but the length of our road was constrained by existing structures here and therefore our ability to get furniture on that was limited.
Oh, Mr. Stone, I apologize for interrupting. One of these where you could put that up so the members of public, they could see also. I apologize for interrupting your presentation.
Can everybody see that? Again, so the length of the road was somewhat limited. So these have narrow necks out to the building sites, which are being considered as pork chop lots. So that's our waiver request. And again, a couple of small revisions. We took off a note that was on sheet SP one and we did something to sheet S one as well. Must be in the letter.
Yes, it is. Item one.
Item one, so.
I have it right here.
Oh, thank you. The item one, not a building lot. The open spaces were identified as not a, not a buildable lot to make sure that nobody was out there trying to draw a building for a house up. So those were the two, the two plan revision issues. We also left with, with the need to get the appropriate sign offs on the water system, of which both the state and the water commission have sent their letters of approvals. And Mike was also working on the protective covenants and the language for the easements.
Kevin Baum was working with Caroline directly. I know he sent her, I think she wanted to see a legal description of an easement. And I know that Kevin, Kevin got to you directly with the easement language that you asked for and some, I think you wanted in the protective covenants that those lots weren't buildable as well, the common areas.
Yes, and so I acknowledge that I have, I remember seeing the covenants. I don't remember seeing the easement language, which doesn't mean that I didn't receive it. I have not reviewed those. And so I would say as long as it addresses what this board's concerns were, I don't know that that should hold up anything if Tom and Michelle particularly don't have any concerns about that. But I think we were really explicit with what the purpose and need for those was. It's up to this board whether or not you want to see them because I have to admit that I was remiss in not passing them along. So this board did not get the chance to see them yourselves, so.
Well, I think that if, if, if the applicant agrees that it will be, that it'll address the concerns, plus it's being added to the plans, not saying that it isn't necessary, but that it is something that's forthcoming in the works and also, you know, excuse the word, because I understand. But I'm sure.
She hasn't, it's just a.
Knowing that that is a deal stopper, if it doesn't get addressed, I'm sure that I feel comfortable that the applicant will proceed properly.
So has Tom and Michelle seen that language or not?
Aha, my apologies. So Michelle and Tom have not seen it either. I thought I'd pass it along.
But regardless, I think, I mean, we all know that it's been done. I think if anything, the board can move forward, approve it with the condition that that get reviewed by board members and any concerns be addressed subsequent, but I don't think it's a real issue.
And just following up on that, so there was an issue, there was a, part of the thing we just discussed before, saying thing isn't terribly descriptive, but was the idea of all the deeds having a language, way to write to ZBA.
Process.
Process, is that, does anyone know if that's been included in the?
What I did was I took the covenants and I added in that no further variances can be requested and that the common lots cannot be buildable, will never be construed as buildable lots, and that each unit owner will own a percentage, a seventh of the common, so that you had that tax.
That was one of those things, too.
All three of those things were done and then I gave it to Kevin Baum and he tightened it up, made sure it was done correctly and got it to you. And we didn't hear back, so.
No, you didn't, I know you didn't.
But of course, if there's further modifications, I think we definitely addressed the three issues you brought up. I know we did.
So if I could just ask Tom and Michelle, do you have any concern in, is it enough to have the restriction to limiting their access to ZBA process in the covenant and in the plan? Or is there a reason to require that also in the deed?
Did you say it was in the deed?
No, I said that the deeds are each going to reference if they have a portion of ownership of the common land and that the common land is not buildable. As far as no further variances, we weren't sure a hundred percent if it's even legal to pre-tell somebody that you can never ask for a variance, but we put it in the covenants. And the covenants are referenced.
Yeah.
And the covenants are referenced in each deed. I mean, they have to accept the covenants, the homeowners association to own, so we did do it.
Yes, I think having them in the covenants is sufficient. I don't think that's be spelled out in each deed because each owner will be getting.
The deeds, the covenants are referenced in the deed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Just like the hundred feet no cut that you asked us to put in as far as the waterfront goes is in the covenants, which is referenced in the deed. And it's the first thing we do before we would accept any offers is make sure that people sign on on the covenants.
Sure.
Thank you. Now, do any board members have any questions based upon this, about this particular issue we're discussing the? No, okay, all right. So the next thing I'd like to hit as we're moving along here is the water pressure issue. So looking back at October, October first, meeting minutes, it looks like that we, one of the final items was state approvals for water pressure and expansion of water district to picture the plans of eight inch water mains. So is I redistance, or I believe I read somewhere, we're waiting for state approval and water district approval. I know we have a lot of letters from the water and sewer district. Do we have state approval? I thought, I guess, Tom.
Do we?
Not that I've seen.
I haven't seen.
Did you?
That was.
We did forward that weeks ago. But the state did approve it and I can re-sign it if you like, but I know we did. Bob sent it, he copied me.
Okay, so the other thing we talked about was some kind of certification engineering stamp that says that the addition of those homes would not be a detriment to the pressure of the existing homes in the district.
So we've hired two companies. The second one, upon the water district's request, Wright Pierce, and they did do a three-page report that calls that out. You didn't get that either?
I'm not going to comment on this, you know, I'm past.
First thing we do is give in, and when we don't hear back, we kind of just.
Fair enough.
I have it here with us, but they did. You can pass it.
Well, this is their report where they took existing information from two different hydrants and then interpolated at the end of the project what the, what the conditions would be. And that's what the state made their decision of approving based on.
We first had to get this and then we gave it to the state and then the state gave us that and then we forwarded them both to you. But it does give up.
Conclusions and recommendations says exactly that, if you don't want to read.
And it makes its way this way.
So I'm just going to, I want to cross my, please dot my, so one of the things we have here is a October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen letter from the Department of Environmental Services, the state of New Hampshire to Vern across here. I'm going to cross that correctly. Mentioned Ralsford Water and Sewer District in regard to Victoria Point subdivision, saying that NHDES Drinking Water and Brown Water Bureau has reviewed and hereby approves the subject design plans received October second, two thousand nineteen from the subdivision developer, Tri-Tech Engineering Corporation for the district's expansion of water service to seven new residential units off of Silver Street. This approval is subject to the following. One, compliance with EMV hyphen DW four oh four design standards for large public water systems for all new construction, including conformance to AWWA standards. Notification this office upon completion of construction and submittal of electronic copy of record drawings backslash as built upon completion of the project, signed by Cynthia N. Clemons, P.E. So can someone, does someone represent that in terms of the first item, compliance with EMV hyphen DW four oh four design standards has been met? You agree, Tom, that it's been met?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Does anybody on the board have any questions regarding this letter that I just read?
Can I keep this letter for the?
Absolutely.
I'm sure I have it in my email, but I will contact you with any of these materials that are, if I don't have them, but I'm sure I do. There's a summary.
Right.
Which one is this on?
This is the state. Is this a copy as well?
Yes.
Can I keep this as well?
Is this Wright Pierce report in the record already or not?
No, because I didn't know that.
Okay.
I think you talked about having somebody do it, but I never.
We brought one company that did it and the water commissioner's recommended using this company.
In the minutes, it does note that you were hiring somebody to do and that you consulted two firms as well.
That's the second one.
So for the board and for the public, so this is a memorandum from Wright Pierce dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and it says, in regard to the proposed project, the conclusions and recommendations. One, based on the information available and assumptions made above, the Ralsford distribution system can meet the domestic water demands of the proposed development and the proposed subdivision does not negatively impact the pressures on Silver Street. Two, NHDES water system design guidance recommends a minimum water main diameter of eight inch distribution system. Further modeling would be needed if the subdivision increased the water main size. We recommend that Ralsford, excuse me, fire department quantify the need, needed fire flows for development of conformance with town standards and approvals. Has the Ralsford Fire Department?
I have not seen that.
Haven't seen.
You did respond.
Yeah, that was a.
There's a response from the fire department.
From the first test. From, based on the first pressure test.
I do not. That was email that.
Who sent us that email?
I don't recall.
I recall an email exchange about the fire department's response to the first flow test.
Which I think came out the same as. I might be able to find it. It came after this was submitted, so I thought it was based on this.
I don't think so because I don't think that I forwarded that to anyone because I would have reviewed it myself before I had done so.
Tom, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about this issue. Can you provide some guidance there?
I think initially, when you were talking about them saying the assumptions above, I think that's the typical wiggle room that engineers like to do. I don't really have any concerns about that. And I'm pretty confident that with that, as well as the district report, the DES, I'm sure that the flow test will come out, that the Ralsford flow test for the fire department will be adequate. I don't see how all of this stuff could happen and then not have adequate flaws.
And given that the fire department didn't have a concern with the first flow test, I think it would be fair to make their approval a condition of approval, but I don't think that that would be a hindrance because I agree that it's likely not an issue at this point.
And just following up with this lot of thought, Mr. Stone, you said there were two studies? Is that one?
The relative to the water, Mike initially had the first flow test done, which again addressed.
The water commissioner asked me to go to Mick Construction and Mick Construction gave me this water pressure company that they said does all their certification. So I got that report, which I submitted to you, and I think afterwards it came up that this other firm has your modeling and everything right in their software and that it had been preferable had I have gone to them. So there was like a quick apology and asked me to go that route, so we've done it twice, but both letters say it's sufficient. I mean, the good news is that.
They do.
Two different engineers have said the same thing.
Again, the first time around, it addresses the existing conditions and does have the readings of eight hundred and sixty to nine hundred gallons a minute, which certainly adequate for fire, fire flow, but it didn't address proposed conditions, which again, because Wright Pierce has a model, the Ralsford model, they were able to take some of the data, they redid this test, but took that data, put it in a model, determined that it was acceptable. Wouldn't ever be the flow in, or pressure in Silver Street.
All right, so could we see that letter? And I think you represented, we may have seen it before.
This one I.
Tom, have you read it?
Yes, that one looks familiar.
And I think so, too. So I'm just going to again, read this into the record. So this is by a September fourth, two thousand nineteen letter from the Testing and Coring Company on August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, in Ralsford, New Hampshire, at the intersection of Silver and Short Street. The flow test was static residual reading and upper directional hydrant was performed at approximately one P M with readings of eight hundred and sixty, nine hundred gallons per minute with a sustained sidewall pressure of twenty-eight pounds sign, twenty-eight pounds TSI, square inch, with a static pressure of upper hydrant of sixty-five pounds per square inch plus residential pressure, residual pressure, quote, underflowing, quote, of forty-five pounds per square inch. Those would be considered favorable pressure for both domestic use and fire protection. So I'd like that to go on the record, too. It's not already in the record. All right, so does any members of the board at this point have any questions for the applicants? And also, Michelle, do you have any comments on this?
No, I think that's mine. It's possible.
Okay, as a condition of approval? All right. All right, thank you. So, and forgive me, I'm just going to go over some of the prior notes here and minutes. And again, Tom, the question on sheet SP one describing the different types of houses to be built, that's been resolved? The issue about the drainage easement language being added to the plans and the homeowners association documents, that's been resolved, Tom?
Right, we have that, yes.
And the, again, if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, the plans show eight inch water mains throughout, is that correct, Tom?
Yes.
All right, I'm just going to go back to the prior. So I think the next portion of the hearing is going to be the public hearing on the issue of a waiver request being asked by Lawrence Development regarding pork chop lots. Pork chop lots, sort of as the name implies, describes a design of a lot that, as I understand it, is prohibited by our regulations. However, the applicant has included it as it would, for two lots, I believe, as it would create more open space. Does any members of the public have any questions on that? Do Tom or Michelle have any comments on that issue?
My comment is I read the waiver request and I think the main concern that we have, that I have, says in the regulations that we do not approve, we do not permit pork chop lots, but they're not defined anywhere and there are no regulations describing them. And I think that's something we'll probably speak to later, but for now, to have this waiver request, and it does, I think it meets the provisions of the waiver request in the ordinance, so I don't have any issues any longer. They submitted the information necessary, I think, for the board to approve the request.
And Michelle, do you have any comments on that or?
No, I agree with Tom. I think eventually the board should consider adding a definition for pork chop, but at this point, I grant the waiver.
All right, great. And I didn't officially say the public hearing was closed on that issue, but I think it, it is. All right, so at this point, do any members of the board have any other comments they'd like to make about either the waiver request or the application in general?
I just think on the pork chop lots, you know, I think you have to deal with what you have for buildable area, keeping open space and a premium. I just think on the pork chop lots, you know, I think you have to deal with what you have for buildable area, keeping open space at a premium. And this is different than someone perhaps building a pork chop lot on a main road. This is a subdivision, you know, which has confinement. So with or without the definition of a pork chop lot, I think that, you know, it's viewed as being the fairest use of the land. And that, you know, care is being taken to provide the best overall in the town's view as well. So I have no problem with pork chop lots.
All right, so again, I admit that I'm not the most knowledgeable chairman, but I believe at this point, it would be appropriate to vote on the application?
I would say let's vote on the waiver request.
Waiver request first. All right, all right, thank you. So the next item will be, would anyone like to make a motion to either approve or disapprove the waiver request in regard to Lorik's Sustainable Development and Victoria Point and the pork chop lots?
A motion to approve?
All right.
I'll second it.
We were just talking about the waiver for the pork chop lots, so we're not talking about any approval conditions or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, so we're just talking.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the ayes have it, all right? So next, we would vote on the application. And anyone feel free to say differently.
I think, yeah, I think we would.
We need to make sure we have our conditions really clear.
The conditions.
Okay, so.
There are going to be a few, one of which is, I would say, we have to make sure that we reconcile all of the professional fees. You have paid some to that, but I know that we've also had some expenses to that. And we need to make sure that we're aligned and you may have fees due. And so we should check that off the list before there's any approval. And then there's the covenants, checking the covenants and the.
Final review of those.
The easement language to make sure that that's congruent with the board's desire.
Fire department.
And making sure that we get a letter from, or some kind of approval from the Fire Department on the pressure, on the water pressure.
All right, so.
Am I missing anything, Tom, Michelle?
No.
It was just three of them, that's all I had.
Okay, so I would move that we grant the subdivision application, that we approve the subdivision application with those three conditions.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the ayes have it.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you both for your patience in this process. I know it's been a long one.
Welcome to the downtown.
It was all important stuff, I'll be honest with you. It's none of it that wasn't appropriate. You have to understand what you're doing.
Do you have an estimated groundbreaking on anything other than existing buildings? I know it's a lot of site work, but.
The goal would be to start the road, not be able to pave it, but to start the road next month.
Really for the wind?
Probably brown industrial.
Please do talk to our road agent and make sure that we're there to watch what you're doing. Or Jay Stevens, or, you know, somebody's got to watch the development of the road at every step of the way.
I'll talk to you a little bit about the process.
Yeah, and just make sure you're dotting your i's along the way, so we're not doing core sample or something like that.
Excellent, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is, as I understand it, approval of minutes for the first 2019? And I've read the minutes, I think you're okay with me. Anyone have any comments on the minutes? All right, it's a little bit second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. Second is correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
There's no correspondence.
Okay, there's no correspondence. Is there any other business?
I just wanted to mention that we're heading into the season of our opportunity for zoning ordinance revisions for the March ballot. And those require public hearings, which take place in the December-January timeframe. So I've asked both Tom and Michelle to make recommendations to this board. We do have, as you've heard, the pork chop conversation, that we ought to consider defining that in some way. So that we can honor the intention of the ordinance that does not allow them. The other thing is that, it was brought to my attention that, well, the zoning ordinance is very restrictive in what we require for building permits, which includes painting, and I didn't realize that the painting was in there. So I've asked Tom to evaluate and come up with a reasonable list of what requires a building permit, because that is listed in the zoning ordinance for this group's consideration. But for each of you also to think about what you think works or doesn't work about the ordinance too, if you all have any.
And do we need to, in terms of procedure before the next meeting, so this will be an item on the next meeting's agenda, right?
That probably is the most prudent thing to do, is I don't think we'd probably get a lot of public comment. It probably doesn't warrant its own separate meeting, but it does require that we get our language together. So I think the first order of operations is that I have to look at the calendar and find out what our window is for these public hearings. And that will inform whether or not we're doing them at the December meeting or not, in which case, I'll get you language ahead of time. Because as long as we get the intent of the revision straightened out, you know, nitpicking the language is, you know, can happen later. As long as you're keeping the substance of.
So are you saying that the, basically the identification generally of the ordinance is to be modified, needs to be identified on the hearing notice for the next meeting?
No, so usually what happens is at one meeting, the board discusses what they want to do. They, in interim, a public hearing is noticed and we put together the language and then we discuss the actual.
But is it the December meeting that we have discussed?
Well, it's discussed in December and then last year, January 8th was the public hearing.
And we were on the deadline with that, so we're going to have to be really careful about that. But I think that does make more sense, because when you're doing something as nitpicky as defining, you know.
Well, it's going to be open to revisions and tweaking, I think, as it goes too, but I think to get the real crux of it though.
You got to get the crux of it, you got to get, you got to get the board to agree on the crux of it. And you can, you know, nitpick, you know, in non-substantive ways.
Things like that, legal should almost be reviewed and people that are professionals in the field to make sure that we're writing it according to what it needs to say. Especially when you're talking definition.
Well, there's discretion, you know, I think you can take what other places write and modify it for what works for us, such as, you know, the road frontage shouldn't be any less than, you know, 20% of the length of the lot. Or the, you know, the lot can't be any more than five times the length of the width. Or, you know, some kind of relative dimensional.
If we do a monitoring, that's going to go into, you know, such serious guidelines, I think, don't you think it's sort of haphazard not to have it reviewed by legal? Instance being a comment was made by the applicant saying that he's not even sure if it's legal, that we can restrict any future option of the ZBA.
Oh, the ZBA, that's completely different and I don't disagree with that.
The example being that, you know, if we're going to adjust or modify, you know, these regulations, I think that we need to be very sure that they're fair.
Well, so.
And I'm not just talking about definition of a pork chop lot. I mean, I don't want there to be anything really major that we're looking at tweaking beyond that, that's next.
So to my mind, there are three different things. What requires a building permit, I would say that's completely discretionary to the municipality and it can be whatever we want, as long as it's defined. Pork chop lot, I think, is pretty much the same too, but it might be informed by what makes sense. And you would probably take into consideration why a pork chop lot is undesirable and was prohibited in the first place. But I don't think that there's any, you know, typically zoning ordinances are not challenged on things like those definitions. You define it and it either is or it isn't.
But it's not defined and it's surprising that we.
Well, so the coming up with the definition, I think, is the board's discretion. This whole other thing about whether or not we can take away somebody's rights to the ZBA, you're absolutely right that that is legally questionable. However.
They can try, I mean, you know.
If the applicant doesn't want to spend their legal dollars to find out, it's not for us to determine for them. It's, you know, one of those things that's legal until somebody challenges it. And given the, you know, the, how much deliberation there was at the ZBA over the severity of infringing on the river setback, that, you know, to my mind, you err on behalf of the public interest that, you know, has that setback and doesn't want to infringe upon it and let them have the burden of proof that, you know, yes, they still have the right, even though we've denied it. And further that they should get a variance on top of that. I just think that's a huge legal lift. But for them to figure out, it just puts the legal burden on them rather than us. They're the applicant, if they want it in their interest, that's for them to spend the legal dollars. But that's a separate issue altogether than definitions and what we want to require. That's really up to a municipality's discretion based on what's in the public interest. You know, what do we find with public input to be in the public's best interest? Which can be informed by professionals, but it's all about, do you want to wait and spend the money? And is it worth waiting and spending the money for, the lawyer would say, which is probably sure whatever you want it to be, that reflects the town's interests.
Right, and you're only talking building permits and definition pork chop right here, but I mean.
So when you give.
Is there anything else large pending that you think, I mean, because you're really in the pulse of the town, that we need to address?
So the one.
I'm no better than you, I think.
Well, so the one big elephant in the room to my mind that we haven't been talking about is that the master plan is way outdated.
Getting older and older.
And we're required to have it and it's required to have certain chapters. But then there are other chapters that we could choose to have. But it's an interactive process that results in a document that reflects the values of the town in terms of what is Rollinsford, what do we want it to be and how do we want it to grow? And all of these conversations about what our regs should be, should mirror the master plan, which is out of date. So I think that's the bigger issue, but you can work on that either chapter by chapter or as a whole. But either way is going to require resources and time and an interactive process with the public. So that's a separate whole thing. I've alerted to the select board to the need of that and the fact that it's out of date. And my goal was to put an RFP out in 2020 to gauge the cost. And then I would hope to budget for it in '21, depending on the cost. You know, maybe we can try to start working on it next year, but really budget for it in '21. So, you know, I wouldn't want us to, for example, completely rezone something that can really change the dynamic of the community, like I wouldn't want.
Based on a dated master plan.
Exactly.
But the master plan is something that we, as long as we talk continually, you know, because there was a while, you know, we've had some good runs at it, some people, you know, but it has sort of fallen by the wayside. You know, a topic that we've discussed in the past is policing some of our other, our other pre-approve plans. Example being, I mean, this is a pretty involved plan, but something simple like, you know, a car repair shop on some of those are thrown, for example, hypothetically. You know, we approve plans and they call for, you know, no vehicle maintenance upside, certain paved areas, which still don't seem to ever happen, you know, we've talked about policing.
Of process, like inspection process, enforcement process.
Downstream, he's got the, you know, and I'm not identifying anyone, but, you know, things like this that we talk about that, you know, once they're said and done and they're through the select board, you know, and they've got their C of O's and everybody's happy, but there's still some.
Where is his master plan and how big is his master plan?
It's a binder in the select board's office.
And that's it?
Yes, and you're welcome to come.
We had it digitally, didn't we?
I'm sorry?
We had it digitally, didn't we?
You did.
Didn't we?
Possibly.
Just, oh, various chapters.
Well, okay.
Various chapters.
So I know that some chapters were revised, but they were never officially adopted. And I would be reluctant to advise that we adopt them, given that they were not revised with the public input process. Which is what it's all about, isn't it?
Remember, we, you and I and Clem, when we left, remember, we, there was a revision of like a couple of chapters.
I mean, I've got a lot of.
With a public hearing approval.
Really, with public hearings?
A couple of years ago.
Like to my mind.
Is that reflected in the?
No, well, the.
Well, because they were not approved, like you have like an approved version and then some revisions took place, but they have to go to public.
It's been, I think it's been more than a couple of years.
The way that, the way that they were doing it was like revising certain chapters on a schedule, so that it wasn't the whole thing all at once.
Well, right.
And I think we hadn't even adopted them, I think we hadn't adopted them.
They were adopted and they were in a public hearing.
Well, adopted, but I don't think this body can adopt them, I think they have to go to town meeting.
I think they have to be approved at town meeting, yes.
Yes, so I don't think they've been adopted, because I think they have to go to town meeting. And I'll check on that, but.
I don't think so, I think that, I mean, I could be wrong, but I've seen.
I thought we went all the way with a couple of chapters.
The planning board approves it and then they were adopted. So I could be wrong, but.
So I'm still, I think it's one thing to have a public hearing and I think it's another thing to have, you know, to survey the public or otherwise engage with the public about what do you want this to be.
I don't know that that's a requirement, I think the public hearing is that, fulfills that requirement.
Well, it fulfills that requirement, but I guess, you know.
It's up to the town if they want to like create a survey or have like more input, but it's not a requirement.
Well, nonetheless, we have to figure out the master plan. Whether or not these, you know, these chapters were adopted, I don't think the whole thing is up to date.
No, I think because even if, even if you're going on the schedule, there has to be chapters that are outdated, because all the chapters have to be updated, I believe.
Ten years.
Every, yeah, every 10 years. So the ones that we revised a few years ago were up for revision. And I'm sure that there are more that are up for revision now.
What was the last year we had Chairman Garapi?
Relates me.
I remember Chairman Garapi made a good on and really got some things going and then who's after Mike?
Oh, it was Pat Maccam.
Pat, he did a lot on it.
Yeah.
Pat was really good.
Was Charlie Pudman?
No.
That's, that was before Mike, yeah. But Pat was good on it and then after Pat was?
Miles.
But Miles was very brief, I think.
No, Caroline Hendel was very brief. Miles was a year and a half.
But did we do a lot then?
No.
Were you here then, you were here?
Yeah, like I was here with Pat.
With Miles?
For some of that, yes, as a citizen.
But I don't think we did a lot those years, so.
No, the last one, it was with Pat, yeah.
You've got to go back to like Pat, Pat and, yeah, and Mike.
So nonetheless, like I think we need to just look into the situation.
That's back, away.
Seems like they do some more careful than what we have.
That's way.
Assess.
But there was, there was some, yeah, I guess we have to find out where we stand.
Right.
You just said that.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we might want to look at, you know, bigger picture items, but I would want to see where we're at with the master plan before I would suggest that.
Right, some of the chapters, there were some templates out there, there was some verbiage, there was some. I think that Krebs used to be able to capture, because he did some work on it for us. And I want to say he captured language from other towns, small towns. I'm sure that he might have borrowed language from other towns for some of those.
Quite possibly.
Hypothetically, right, I would just say, but, I mean, it was applicable to a certain extent.
That's always just your ease of like writing it out versus just cutting and pasting relevant. Because in my experience, that's what you kind of create, because you're not reinventing the wheel.
It's still the town's best thing, that's hard.
Can I just conjecture here?
Sure.
We're working on a big master plan process for the city of Rochester right now and usually. And usually there is a public engagement component of it, to see, you know, what the public values, what the goals and objectives are of the community, you know, what the vision is for the future, 10 years down the road. So I think that is an important piece of this.
But what does that look like, I mean, is that like a public hearing, is that like a public meeting, is that like a survey that gets sent out?
Well, I went to one, I went to one in a community in Maine, and it was, it was, it was really interesting. They had different stations, they would have posters on the wall in these different stations, and they had a map of the town. And everybody who came got, you know, you go to this station, and this station is about, what are the areas in town that you think are most important to preserve, and here are your four dots. And you can put your four dots on any one of the things that are already listed, or you can add other things, and you're using your dots to vote. And, and so they, like, got kind of a real-time survey from all these people who chose to come about, you know, what are the areas in town you think are most valuable to preserve? And then they'd have another section that talks about something completely different. And you just, you know, ding, 15 minutes is up, and you go to the next session, section. And that way, you read about that section, you've got a facilitator at that section telling you about, you know, what you're supposed to consider and do at that.
Who put that on?
It was a larger community that had planning staff, and the planning staff facilitated that. So, you know, it's something that potentially with some thought and planning, we could do, perhaps in this room, but.
Well, also, it could, you could have a town meeting, like, you could have something set up outside town meeting, or like.
Well, the.
Yeah, it might be worth reaching out to New Hampshire Lucens to see if they would help.
Oh, they would be fabulous for this, yeah.
Or, or, you know, in the planning profession, there's a lot about going to events now. Then having a public forum, there's more value of going to events or having surveys, or finding a lot more people answer surveys.
As somebody who's on public events in this town, it's hard to get people to show up, I know that from experience.
Yeah, so that's why usually you have to go to an event that's already planned. Say, the Mills Open House, have somebody there that is surveying people that are coming to that event.
Yeah. Catch the fish in the net.
Although that, that event is interesting because it's largely not all residents.
Yeah, it's not all residents, but you can still ask about it of people before they.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so we can talk about that some more, but for the short term, if you could all just think about the zoning ordinance and think about what the lighter things might be that could use clarification or revision of some kind.
I may go back to one of my old topics, which is impact fees. Because, and I haven't heard, I don't know if John was, John Krebs was in favor, but maybe I'd like to hear the next meeting, Tom and Michelle's thoughts on that issue, so.
They are in the zoning ordinance, they're just not something we do.
We've discussed the administrative end of that too.
I know that Caroline said before that it was a big burden, so I thought, I think, to some degree. But the structure of the town administration has changed a bit since, I think, the other discussion.
I, I admit less so, because we do have a bookkeeper now, and given that we have a bookkeeper, although I wouldn't say that we have as much administrative support as we need, it might be to the point where the benefit is worthwhile, particularly for something of, you know, in order of magnitude where we, it would be detrimental not to, I guess. So I think it's worth discussion.
Sure. Great.
I don't know if it's me.
Alright.
Yeah, so December 3rd? Is that workable for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, just remember it's my birthday on the phone.
Birthday day.
Plan appropriate.
Bring them all.
Anything potentially on the agenda?
Yes, there's a conditional use permit asked.
For an ADU on Rollins Road, there's new construction on Rollins Road. The home at the corner of Rollins Road and Clement, the big white farmhouse, there's an empty lot before that on the right.
That's a lot, oh, yeah.
And, and there's gonna be a single-family home there, they're looking to put an ADU in it, so they're coming to us for a conditional use permit. And then, I was kinda surprised we did not get Mr. Phipps' application after his consultation at the last meeting for his home on his lot on Turgeon Lane. So I would expect that to come in, but I think that's all that are aware of at this point.
Great, okay. So a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Alright, thank you, everybody, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, how you doing?
Sue, I feel like we're overdue for a conversation.
Okay.
So I just wanted to say, I've been out of the office for the past couple of days at a conference, and tomorrow's really crazy, but if you wanna, because I'm trying to get ready for Monday, and I'm not ready for Monday, 'cause I have an office meeting. But if you wanna come by anytime next week, I would be honored for your time. Absolutely, for a conversation, ma'am.